Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone. Everyone, I'd like to call the April 12, 2022, meeting to order of the Travel Council Advisory Board. Okay, wonderful.
I'll make a question.
Companies of interest?
Yeah, so I would like to disclose that I could have potential conflict of interest, and I think I do have a conflict of interest. Howard is applying to be on the board. Howard works for Rocky Mountain Railway. Rocky Mountain Railway is now a tenant inside the Montevideo. And I work pretty closely with Howard. Like, I need to disclose that that I have a working relationship with Howard and which could be construed, you know, construed as biased, you know, stuff. So I would, I would like to abstain from that process.
Do we still have enough for a corn without Jason?
Yeah.
Well, should I be abstaining as well because I work at Rocky Mountaineer, Redtail there?
Well, I mean, I think it's, we don't have to necessarily abstain. I think we can discuss it. We can also discuss when it comes to that discussion item.
Okay.
I think you're not required to. I think disclosing it is pretty good and then so that we're aware of that relationship. And then, I don't know, how do I whole deal?
I, I reached out to the county and they, they're like, I definitely need to disclose that, you know, stuff because depending on, you know, how it turns out, it could be construed as that I'm helping, you know, my business or my, or just in my working relationship with, with us being three feet away from each other. You know, and so anyway.
I think we're a small enough community, almost every single person here.
Right, I'd have some of those too because they stay at our hotels.
Yes.
So I think I might as well put all this out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Daniel, go for it.
Well, I was just going to say what was just said. Is there anybody in town you don't know, Jason? I work in a hotel. I see Rocky Mountaineer at my hotel a lot. I've worked with Howard closely. And so I do have a potential conflict of interest there as well. But I can be honest in saying that it will not affect how I vote or what I view. I think I will do the best for the Travel Council in this case. So I don't feel like I need to recuse myself. If you do that and you admit that, then you definitely need to not vote. That's my personal opinion.
Fair enough. Well, I guess any other questions? I, I have expert communication. I communicated with both applicants outside of this meeting to inform them about the time and place and make sure that they knew what was going on in the application process. So I want to disclose that. Any other disclosures or?
Just put aside what I said too about Redtail. And the hotels, I have to disclose, they stay at our hotels. So again, it wouldn't, I'd be similar to Daniel. It wouldn't affect my decision as far as the travel council goes.
Well, I guess it won't affect my decision. I just want to disclose.
Yeah.
There could be.
Great, and these citizens to be heard. And then, I don't think any introductions.
Maybe even say, yeah, a quick round of introductions. Molly Grant, Economic Development Director for the County.
For Economic Development.
Thanks, Rachel.
Finally get to meet Rachel. Hi, Rachel.
Robert Rivera, the Assistant Marketing Director for the Travel Council.
Alicia Stott, Assistant Marketing Director, two. Number two.
Ben Alter, Economic Development Specialist.
Sharon Kinsley, Board Member.
Jason Taylor, Board Member.
Chanel Mary Nysby, Board Member. Grand County Commission and my associate for the Travel Council.
Dylan Jones, Moab City Council liaison.
Jenny Leeison, Chair. Do you want to go, Daniel?
Sure. Daniel Lovridge, I'm a, work at the Hudo Hotel and I'm a board member.
Egan Metzner, Moab to the Monument Valley Film Commissioner with Grand County Economic Development.
Thank you. The next that we're interviewing, the potential candidates, the Travel Council Board Vacancies.
In terms of presentations, under the, if any, love is going to provide us with an update on our campaign and some kind of travel trends. We're at the end of the meeting, but under that kind of, attend the heading there.
Yeah, and then we want each one to introduce themselves.
You got the hot seat for you. Is there anyone else to interview question sheets?
I just disclose something first before this proceeding proceeds. I'd like to state that I'm also an owner of a restaurant in town. Rocky Mountaineer is just a secondary job for me. It's a new job, so I'm really applying for this position as the owner of a restaurant on Main Street. Not even though I work with Rocky Mountaineer, I'm using my resume and my credentials in that capacity for this position. So, and on the conflict of interest granted, I know everybody here, I'm a professional. We all work together for the same product ultimately. So for me, it's a team effort. So it's, it's hard not to be conflicted in this town because it's just so small.
Well, well, I guess we'll just hop right into it. Tell us a little bit about yourself and kind of your background.
Do you want to tell me? I moved to Moab in 1997 to open the Red Rock Bakery. And I've been here ever since, and she was the 25th anniversary, funnily enough. For 20 years, I've been involved in various boards, primarily with Grand County. I was part of the Recreation Special Service District for seven years. And one of our accolades was the construction of the Aquatic Center. And I started learning about things like mineral lease monies, parents' taxes, public plans. I was actually on that board illegally. There was a conflict of interest there because I was not a lecturer of the county. I'm a Scotsman, I'm an immigrant, I'm now an American citizen. But at that time, there was a conflict and the, the county did make variances year after year for me. And I ultimately just could not reconcile that that was not right. So I actually resigned from that board, but I really enjoyed being involved. So the marketing Travel Council position came around. And like the recreation board, I really didn't have much of a general understanding of the mechanics of these operations. Took me a few years on the recreation board, same with the Travel Council, through a number of budget cycles, learning the intense state code that governs basically the ins and outs. For nine years, I served lawfully. Then COVID happened, a lot of things happened personally, mentally, where I resigned late last year for various reasons, it's not for a lot of personal stresses and I had time to reconcile that. I just love hospitality. My daughter asked me, she's now the general manager for my business. So it's a second generation of a family business that's very ingrained in this town. And she asked me, why do you do this, Howard? Why, how can you be nice to people all the time? I said, I'm in the hospitality industry. I'm actually a healthcare worker. My job is to make people, people feel better in whatever small capacity. And then I looked at Moab and I said, wow, that's all we're about is making people feel better. We're actually part of the healing business. It's called tourism, it's called hospitality, but most importantly, it's hospitality. That's what we are. That's why I do it. Nothing gives me greater joy than putting a smile on somebody's face at seven o'clock in the morning when they haven't had their coffee. For me, that's a challenge and I see our town as a massive force for that, for good. And I just want to see the Travel Council marketing this town so we're, we're full all the time. I mean, I went through three months of winters of business long before this train start growing. And the hotels were really quiet and I feel there's some avenue there. And I'm also really behind sustainable tourism. Part of my process, when I was most recently on this board, was working hand in hand with the board through many who are still here to become a sustainable destination. We didn't know what that meant at the time, but we found a roadmap and we followed it. And we won a national award last year for sustainable tourism under the backing of the board and the former director. That word needs to continue, it's by no means over. One of the main reasons I want to come back on board is to be part of that team again and make us just the best destination on earth.
Awesome. So what is your understanding of the Travel Council?
One of the most brilliant inventions by the state of Utah in the mid 1960s, diversifying economic development. The state offered an optional tax to the counties to try something new. They felt that the industry was very monoculture, agricultural, industrial. So they opted, they gave an option to the counties to take this optional tax, which could be used to encourage visitation to your county. And that's the bottom line mission of the Travel Council of each county is to bring visitors to your county, clean and hopefully to spend the night.
Cool. And what do you hope to bring to the Travel Council from your personal experience? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement?
Forty years of hands-on professional experience in hospitality. Also nine years of back knowledge of this board and its roles and what it's supposed to do. And fulfill the task that I was part of when I was on the board, to be recognized as the goals, be a sustainable tourism destination, as outlined in the global sustainable tourism guidelines, which Grand County joined, first county in North America, you know, which was a fantastic accolade to the county of Grand County to do that.
And what do you think are some of Moab slash Grand County's best assets?
People and land, best assets. It's very, and a great facility for people to come visit. If you were all over in the wellbeing business, we have a great set of wards for guests to lay their heads down at night. We have fantastic food and beverage options here and have been throughout Utah. Nothing of our size, aside from Park City, has come close to us. I think we're one of the most incredible places on this earth.
Awesome. And then the flip side, what do you think are some of Moab slash Grand County's biggest challenges and possibilities?
Um, that's easy. Workforce, housing. It's a major, it's a major issue. And I truly believe that the mechanisms within the codes of the law, that we can actually physically help solve the issues we have. And I would love to see the state actually see that wisdom in that because we need to help desperately. Our product is really suffering now, ladies and gentlemen. We are not able to deliver to our guests the best possible service we can. And as a result, a lot of guests are leaving here to satisfy unlikely to return. And that's a very dangerous thing to me. Our best asset is we just blow them away with service and they cannot wait to come back. So until we get the housing situation situated, I mean, it's, it's awful. I mean, it's, it's become one of the most unsustainable aspects of our operations. And it needs really aggressive and emergency actions to solve that because we can't deliver our product to the level we all want to.
Very nice.
No way.
Two more questions. So what is your understanding of tourism taxes and how those monies are to be distributed and allocated?
There's actually a couple of taxes complained as TRT, which is lodging, which is applied on any private sector accommodations camping. Here the MBS name, it should be taxed. So lodging, there's also two other taxes that fall under the TRCC tax. Not often talked about, it goes in restaurants at 1% and motorized vehicles under 30 days at 18.49%. So those are the three main avenues of taxation activities. With that, within those realms, as far as, as far as I can understand, I know a lot changed last year, but I believe 37% of that dollar that's taken in that tax is to be used for tourism slash economic development. And the rest of it is to be used for mitigation, which is clearly outlined in the code of the state law.
Awesome. And then the last question. Are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the second Tuesday of the month? And or any special meetings that may be called for?
No, I mean, if I received this position, I clear my calendar and choose each, so I can attend every meeting.
Well, I think that's all of our questions. I don't think we can ask any additional questions unless we ask you to both applicants. So super appreciate your time for being here. And I think we'll call Alex up. You're welcome to stay or leave.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thanks for your due.
Appreciate it. Got you straight.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
B is O R I. S K Y.
Thank you.
Or ships, or ships. Awesome. We're ready for the second interview.
Yeah.
Hey, Alex.
Like the one guy you don't have in town? Oh, I know you.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Full disclosure, I took some notes from Howard's. My career had not started 22 years ago. Actually, looking for that guy. Adventure, so I was a river guy for 11 solid seasons here and wintered in Salt Lake. And then I worked in restaurants in Salt Lake and most of my life. And that's when I decided to give a friend Salt Lake and open a sushi bar. Since then, we opened a second restaurant. Maybe some of you have heard of it, it's called the Bean Center. And that's been my business ever since. I have also continued to be a river guide as well. So I've never really given up on that career. It's still part of my balance. So still do some trips and some handfuls trips here. While trying to run to restaurants and get back to the game however I can. That's a little bit about myself. And as far as the restaurants go, and just like the reason that I'm in Moab is because I just love this town. It's just, it was just so welcoming ever since I first set foot here. I remember driving into the, you know, just drive the past Arches and then you get to the valley. You're like cyberleaf every time, back and forth. So and it's just, it's been great. I mean, I love the community here, I have so many good friends in this town. And who have, many of whom have gone to start other restaurants, like businesses and raise families by houses and so on and so forth. And yeah, I just feel like we have a really good thing going here. And law definitely needs some, I think, a little bit more direction to be a much more sustainable society in terms of what I see these days. So obviously gone through a lot with the COVID situation. I think that brought a lot of, lifted up highs even wider to our situation. And now I've got to try to figure out how to COVID before.
Awesome, thank you. And what is your understanding of the travel?
It's a entity that takes care of or looks at economic situations in a way like that. Lot of money to deal with and trying to take into consideration all the different entities in town that have played into our recreation and tourism industry. And then try to make some of the best decisions with the most amount of people as town or with money that we get to, you know, deal with and spend. Hopefully make everybody happy at the same time.
What do you hope to bring to the Travel Council? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement?
What I can bring is just a point of view from the restaurant standpoint. Been, you know, as long as Howard for sure, but 12 years now of seeing our workforce, you know, and dealing with the get to bad part of the workforce and really seeing the community from the ground up and what this town needs to survive, just the nuts and bolts. Besides, you know, we do a lot of tourism, but there's like, you know, we have to have wheels on the car or, or the track down the road. So that's, my standpoint is that I'm behind the workforce and I'm trying to facilitate people living in, like, not in their van, but living in houses and constantly trying to get people to find a, find a place to live for their dogs to live. So and then as a business owner, I just, of course, we, we want to all move forward with how to, how can we sustain the amount of people that are coming to this town? Give them the great service that they deserve for coming and spending lots of money to be here. And giving them a great experience and a new place to live or a visit and just the, the community at large, so from the restaurants to the t-shirt shops, to the bookstore, to our campgrounds and hotels. Yeah, just, I've been around here long enough to see from the ground up what it, you know, what Moab used to be. And it can't ever really be what it used to be, but it has to move forward in some positive manner or it's just going to.
And I kind of, I guess it's.
Yeah.
Am I hoping to gain? Yeah, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I, I think I would just like to gain some experience in some of the government. I'm new to government. Haven't been on any other boards, any other councils, so I have a college degree. But that's about it for like professional experience on this, to bring to the table. And I guess that's what I would hope to gain is just experience and that's, that would be my takeaways.
And what do you think are some of Moab slash Grand County's best assets?
I definitely think it's the, yeah, the land and the one other thing that maybe people understand here is, or maybe not, but I grew up on the East Coast where it's in city. And I travel around and every time I come back to Moab, I believe that this is the freshest air on earth. So it's the air is, I think, a huge asset and the clarity of the air and the night sky as well. So the lack of pollution, I think those are all, you know, correct. Yes, we have the land and that's pretty obvious, but I think a lot of things that people miss maybe is the lack of light pollution. Night sky, blue, dark blue skies that we have during the day and the beautiful air that we have. A huge asset to, to our community. I think just, like, just open space. Just saying, I have just being able to get outdoors and in about 15 or 20 minutes, it could be over for everybody for the most part. Really get some perspective on life.
Awesome. What do you think are some of Moab slash Grand County's biggest challenges and possibilities?
Well, I would definitely have to agree with Howard. It's workforce and housing at this point. Hands down. Like I said, and I've been reaching this for a year and a half now. After COVID, it's, it's kind of predominant for me, but yeah, it's, it's really housing and workforce. Just need to figure out ways to get people to be able to live here, whether they're permanent residents or that they're seasonal residents. We have a very seasonal town, obviously. So we do need to immediately take action on figuring out how to house people that are only here for the busy part of the season. For the slow part of the season. As a business owner that has to pay these people and give them jobs. And when there's, when the money's flying around Moab, yes, we have jobs. When there's nobody flying around Moab, we don't have jobs. So we need, see, you know, a big part of like our workforce is seasonal workforce. So people that maybe do live in a van or, you know, we have a lot of transient 20-year-olds in this town. And it's, I don't think it's ever been, you know, it's always been like that. There's always been 20-year-old transients, but there's no trailers for them to live in. That's where it looks like, so.
No one will get that up.
Across the sweet. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's long past time to really bulk up the workforce in this town. Realize that there's only 5,500 people that you have to choose from to to maintain, you know, 3 million visitors a year. And it's just business after business coming into town. I don't know where they're going to get their workforce from because I'm barely staffed as it is. I considered last year, I considered potentially buying atomic and moving over there. Where do you find the, you know, workforce to, to be that, you know, 100 employees? I barely have 25. There's, there's no pull from, so I feel like that's the, our biggest issue.
Appreciate that.
Oh, and water, by the way. Yeah.
On, and then what is your understanding of tourism taxes and how those monies are to be distributed and allocated?
So the TRT tax, yeah, comes in from hotels. It's taxed on hotel overnight stays and and the car rentals. So we get that money into the agenda. State, state tax, so they take it and they give us 30% back to spend it on opportunities. Different entities like film commission and I'm pretty new to it, so it's about, it's about the most that I know right now.
Appreciate it. And then lastly, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the second Tuesday of the month? And any special meetings that may be called or needed?
For the most part, I have a pretty open schedule. Tuesdays, I can, I can clear my schedule. I know that there's one day in July for the, this is the July meeting. Right now, I'm on a trip in a glass, so I can tell you that I'm not going to be on the other Tuesdays. Also around for other, yeah, special meetings as well.
Right. Well, thank you so much for coming in and answering all of our questions. Like, to deliberation, but so. Okay. It's public meeting, welcome to hang out. You're also welcome to head out.
Okay, yeah. Thanks for your time, guys.
There's me other candidates. And then on to discussion action items. So the discussion nomination, such candidates. I'd like to entertain the motion to, or change the nomination of a new candidate to the Travel Council Advisory Board.
Don't just start a discussion?
Well, make a motion and then you can discuss it.
I would like to make a motion that we have a discussion on the candidates for the Travel Council Board Vacancy.
What's that going to motion?
You know, we, we all know Howard, he's been on the board. We know that he is very knowledgeable. But where I, just personally, I'm, where I'm at is, I think we have done a really, really good job of moving forward and keeping a forward progress. I'm kind of liking the idea of new and fresh ideas, new and fresh. Yeah, would I, oh, new points of view. I think that's where I put new points of view. That's where I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards. To just keep, keep moving, keep going in the, in the direction that we're going, we're heading and then not falling back into old habits.
That's kind of how I look at it too, where it's like, I'm new to the board too in the last year, but it's like, it's nice to see different people from different walks of life coming in. Because I would have, I know I personally have experienced the clean air here because my son has asthma. And when we moved here, he's never had to have an inhaler since we lived in Moab. I'm from Salt Lake, so it's unbelievable, like the clean air. So like, you don't need to talk about it, but at the same time, it's like, that's something. So like, you don't need to talk about it, but at the same time, it's like, that's something that like, it's cool that someone would notice that. And so I look at, I, I agree with Sharon, like I'm like, that's fresh blood, like someone who's, they're wanting their business owner, they run two restaurants. So he may have a different unique experience of his restaurants, um, are in different times than Howard's as far as opening. So he probably has different clientele. So to me, I, I feel the same way where it's like new fresh eyes would be awesome.
I've got a voting matter, but, uh, a concern I have, uh, with both candidates is this board really can't do anything about mobile housing. It's not our mission. It's not, uh, I, you know, it's, it's a huge job and, uh, we were told pretty strongly by the state that we could not put T O T and those types of money towards housing. So I would hate anyone to come onto, on the board with the idea that part of the thing that we're going to be working on is improving the housing situation. If both people talk as if they could help with that situation.
I'm not sure either one of them were saying that our board would help with the housing situation. I know Howard has talked about that in the past. But I think they're just, what the, the question was, what's one of the biggest challenges? I don't, one of the biggest challenges here is housing. I mean, if you asked me that question, and I know we can't do that here, I would say one of our biggest challenges is workforce and housing. But that doesn't mean that, I don't think that means that's what they want to focus on.
Well, see, I got the impression that both of them said, and I want to help. I, you know, I got a little bit of an idea from both of them, but I just, just wanted to make sure whomever you choose and vote for that they understand that the mission is how to, uh, become diversified in our economy, diversification in our economy and how to appropriately spend promotional money. And, uh, I don't get it. I just want that education.
Well, I, I kind of have similar thoughts and the fact that they both sound like our job is to allocate stuff and that's not the case. We are an advisory committee. We make questions. We have very little true power other than to help make some suggestions from our expertise. I felt they both have really good expertise. They know the restaurant industry. I don't. They know that very well and they know the challenges that the people in our community who work in that industry will face. So I don't think we'd go wrong with either candidate. For me then comes down to what do we want? Do we want somebody who has had experience in the past running on this committee and, and can help with some of the challenges that, that, uh, having experience will allow you to help with? Or do you want a fresh insight, somebody who is excited and energized and, and may not come in with a bunch of negativity and then that, or a bunch of preconceptions as to how to run the meetings? You know, I, I like, I like Howard personally, but, um, I think if I were to vote, I would go with the fresh blood personally, just because, you know, active, it's nice to have something different once in a while and it just helps keep everything fresh. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, kind of speaking about Daniel talked about just, um, what avenue to go down. I'm focused on like teamwork and everyone working together, moving forward and like what we can do. Expertise is really important and I think it's great. Everything Howard knows, who knows more, I think, uh, one of me, so that's fantastic. But I just want to collaborate, move forward all together and figure out what we can do to help out the travel.
Well, there's a motion on the floor to discuss, so we have to vote on that. Kind of discuss and then we need to actually hear, have a motion on a particular individual. So to clear that motion, I think you need to vote on that.
So you're saying we, we jumped into the discussion without the vote?
Yeah, I, I guess I, the emotion in a way, Robert's rules, weird stuff, but yeah. So I think we, I think we have to probably vote through that motion.
Kayla's the Robert's rules master.
Damn it, we're a parliamentarian for your interpretations.
Okay, correct.
So do we need to make a motion?
Make a motion to vote.
Closed down.
And she never got a second either.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. You're right. Sorry.
Can I have a motion to close the discussion?
Need to call for a vote.
Call for a vote. On the motion that's on the floor? What, what are we voting on?
We're voting on whether or not we should discuss this.
Oh, what we just did.
Cause that was, that's the motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
To clear that.
So, okay, so go ahead. Call for a vote to discuss. Who wants to discuss?
Can I have a vote? A motion to vote on?
You're just calling a vote.
Just calling a vote. Yeah, the motion's already there. We just didn't vote to actually discuss before we started discussing. So we're just doing that.
Okay. So I get.
I.
This is for all in paper.
I. Okay. And there's.
Okay, passes.
We're in a vote. Are we?
So to open the discussion, I repeat everything I said five minutes ago.
Ditto.
You're good. We're gonna entertain a motion.
Okay.
I would like to pass a motion to vote on the candidates who we've seen today to nominate one of them as our recommendation to the council.
I think you have to nominate a particular.
Oh, okay. Well, then I nominate Alex, whatever his last name is, because I cannot pronounce it.
How do you say?
Rachevsky.
For chess.
I second that motion.
All there?
Hi.
Hi.
Your conference session. We're just. unanimous. Lacy is at.
She's a designer.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We will, our staff will go ahead and put a letter together that will pass the commission. This should go through at next week's commission meeting. And so, uh, if the commission approves it, then Alex will be, uh, independent as the meeting passport number.
And Howard will be, thank you though for his interest.
Absolutely.
Next, um, everyone's been sent all the minutes. Did everyone receive them? Are there any corrections that anyone found?
Yeah, I'd make a, I'd make a motion to approve for December fourteenth, January eleventh, February eighth, March eighth.
Second.
Great. And then, um, I, no, you just say, just say. All discussion. Is there any discussion about the purple of the minutes for December fourteenth, January eleventh, for eighth, for March eighth? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. I have a vote. On paper. I, I.
Way to go, Rachel. Thank you so much. I would like to note that they are beautiful these minutes.
Those were, they were like.
Timestamps.
Very good, yeah.
They're professors have my notes at the end of every course.
There you go.
They were impressive.
Rachel's been testing out a transcription software so that she will see all the words and kind of compress it down later, so. Big effort for Rachel there. Pulling out of the archival dumpster fire and into the present.
Great. Um, next, Marcus, did you want to start the discussion about the working grant?
Sure. Yeah. So I think we just wanted to bring this back. So I guess context, uh, the, the state has cooperative marketing programs, Utah's tourism, which we applied for here. Elaine applied last year, uh, for this program that we're going to discuss, which is really focused on, I can, I can share maybe some, some tidbits from the, from the content, but, but basically timing was, um, said to that board, hey, we're going to do this, this campaign. Asked the commission a letter of support on it, commission gave a letter of support on it, lots of, you know, the, give a letter of support. And we were awarded, uh, for grants, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars matched by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of TRT promotional money. And, uh, the focus, um, is on really fly-in visitation, so targeting as written in the, uh, application, targeting the Midwest and Northern Utah area for fly-in visitation to Moab with the kind of rationale justification that this is, uh, higher spend visitor, a less toy bringing with them and staying on dispersed camping visitor. You know, they're gonna send dollars to Moab Express to get into town, to guide services to get them where they need to go and renting for everything that they need to all the above. So that's kind of the rationale behind it. Because of the timing that, um, it all happened, you know, Elaine obviously isn't here to carry this through and time entry kind of took over the priority for the spring. So this is really the other big marketing campaign that's in the pipeline. And when I brought it to the commission in early January to kind of pre authorize the hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent from the TRT money, they just wanted to have a slightly more in-depth conversation about it before we did that. So kind of where we're at now is time entry is launched. You know, I think at this point it's more tweaks. Uh, and I think the bigger question for this, um, which is in pipeline is kind of as written as an application, does this feel like something that you want to pursue? Do we want to modify it? Um, and then from here, I would probably draft an RFP, um, that contains language in this, and that's what I would bring commission for discussion with the commission, uh, to make sure that if everything that the commission wants now is at a point like this. And wanted to start here. Just to have a conversation about it. Mary, do you have any, just to kind of start off, I know I brought this to the, the pre-authorization meeting in January. When you're under, I was just mentioning that the commission wanted to hear more about this plan, uh, before kind of approving.
That was like, was it January or was it during the budget season?
It was during the budget season, but the follow-up, I tried, I tried to put it on the pre-authorization list. Yeah, the commission just wanted a follow-up conversation, basically. So. Yeah. So anyway, where I think where we're at is, you know, where the season has begun. Things I'm thinking about is, you know, turnover and airport staff. I think Andy was very on board for this. We have Tammy as the interim airport director, who I think is more than capable to handle anything you throw at her. But just, you know, a little bit of, uh, change institutional knowledge, uh, on this promotional campaign. There's some SkyWest money out there that we will kind of also use to promote, uh, that isn't necessarily tied to this, but could augment it in certain ways. Something that Andy was really focused on was like, can we promote the airport, um, kind of locally and in Grand Junction so that people know about the airport and that they can use it? Something else I'm thinking about is, and I think that Jenny can already speak to, is how full are the flights already? Is this something that needs our support? If the flights are all booked up, is it worth spending a hundred and fifty grand on? Those are, these, those are kind of my first thoughts to start the conversation. And then I guess the last part would be, how do we make this fit the responsible recreation and education, uh, resolution? That kind of binds our advertising. So kind of open, really.
I know, like in my experience, um, I flew out of Canyonlands in February and my flight was, it was United. And I had to fly to Denver and then Denver to Pennsylvania. Um, but our flight was about half full. And then coming back, the flight was probably, I would say like three fourths of the way full. And, and we do have company, like our corporate company comes in at least once a month and their flights are usually, um, at least half full. But like most of the time, there's still seats available. So I said, it's at least like three fourths of the way full at, like during season.
Yeah.
So a lot of people I don't really know about Canyonland here.
So, yeah.
It's hard to find when you're, yeah, uh, when you're going to book a flight. I know it's there, so I know to look for it, right? But I always am, I'm surprised, I always think it doesn't always come up when you put Moab.
Right.
And that's, you know, so we just changed it, I guess recently, but it almost worked to call Moab, uh, for, of the airport, just because it doesn't show up. Can you, you know, Canyonland. Anyway, that's just to start. It's, I hear what you're saying. Yeah. So I think because of that, people are searching. I don't know. That's probably has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Yeah, right. But I can see that as a potential goal of this is just in general to raise the profile of the airport, increase airport revenues for the county.
Right.
Get sustainability as a county institution. Yeah, as a, as a port of entry for kind of higher, uh, spend visitors in the area.
Well, and I think it does help to have, uh, when Delta comes back in here, um, where like they don't operate in the winter months, which I was, it was unfortunate that they go where they just have the one flight and now they have the two flights again, um, which is a big difference. Um, so I think that would help just to be able to market that better, just to say, hey, during, you know, during this time of year, Delta and United will fly here. So it's a little bit more accessible for everybody versus just United.
Is, is there anything really based at the airport that's, um, like, that was on the shoulders of Andy, you know, like, cause if we were to do like a promo, you know, and stuff, it's, it's working with United and Delta. It's not really working on the shoulders of Canyonland. You know what I'm saying? I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, so like, are we really not able to do anything because Andy's not there, you know, like they're, they're not going to stop flights.
I guess, I guess Jenny, you're on the airport board. Like, do you have any kind of thoughts on this?
Yeah, and also just talking with Andy, with the travel council as well, just, um, that line was looking into like billboards, um, going to Grand Junction. So that people find out at Grand Junction, you can fly out of Moab. Um, there's multiple avenues. Um, so I know that's what he was thinking of for the SkyWest portion or possibly, you know, this, um, this grant as well. But then also marketing, I know the main problem is it's when people get there, they don't know that there's, they're supposed to book a shuttle and people are just waiting there. Like, how do I get into town and like, or car rentals, you know, like, there's not anything available. So, and besides that, retail's not that crazy busy. But, um, people don't understand the hours of skydive or what's kind of at the airport in general. And I don't think a lot of people in town technically know that. Um, and also Grand Junction, they, their flights to Salt Lake were limited or eliminated recently. So, um, that's gone. So just to tell people that they can fly out of Moab was kind of the big push that he was trying to capture with this. And we're talking about, um, and just as a overall red tail at the FBO, people don't know it's there. They don't know what to do and they're just stuck there. And it's not a good experience when they first get here and they're stuck at the airport. So it's really unfortunate.
And they're like, yeah, I get to town.
Yeah, and I'm just like, oh, I wish you could draw you in and, you know, like how you drive someone in and then also.
There's no Uber here. I've heard that so many times.
Yeah. That's a shame.
Yeah.
Oh, we do. That's good. We have.
In DoorDash.
Three lists. And we have a DoorDash ship.
Yeah.
Does, so, does, um, for Moab Express, do they, do they have a shuttle for every arriving plane that you can just hop on?
Um, so they like to do that. I'm not sure that you can always do that, because if he gets a, if he gets, you know.
I'm not sure if no one gets on the bus.
Yeah, but also he offers the airport, he doesn't do it every single day, but like, you know, if he's got like a private event and that's going to go over there, but then I mean, even myself booking tours with Rocky Mountain here coming in, they're like, hey, give us all your dates right now. We're booking up, like Moab Express is booking up. Right. So end of April, May, they're like, give me your, all your people right now. It's like, okay, like I don't have a second option, really.
Well, I'm wondering if, I mean, this is marketing grant, right? And, and on the other side, it's kind of the product development, like you want to have a smooth experience, right? So is there a part of this where we can think of other money that we have available to either, you know, have a contract to make sure that there is a bus every single time a flight lands? And it guarantees that rate to, um, someone or make that system work better so that it's more, it's easier if I have made no planning and I just landed Canyonlands, that there's an easy way for me to get to town. I know kind of longer term, I think it'd be great if there's like electric shuttle or something like that, that can take advantage of. But we don't have that right now. I don't think that's going to have the conjunction with this program. But I don't know. I'm just trying to think like, how can we make sure, we're thinking about that whole lifecycle of someone using the airport? I guess there's the rental car, right?
But they, there were zero. But they, there were zero rental cars available last summer.
Right, yeah.
If you didn't get them ahead of time. That was, with the train going in, I wondered if you could get a rental car or something.
There's, there's rental cars available. Yeah, I think, you know, last year was kind of an odd thing with things going on and the, you know, the chip shortages, you know, something like that. We, you know, we have our, we had, we had our rental car business out there. You know, enterprise is out there, enterprise was supposed to have four hundred cars last year. They could only get a hundred and fifty cars. You know, we, we thought we were gonna have a whole bunch of cars and we couldn't, couldn't buy cars, you know? So I think that there was, there was that, there was, yeah, it wasn't that, it was just, you know, they couldn't get the inventory.
Then it was compacted by.
Yeah, like our company, we've, we've tripled our inventory this year, you know? But it's, but we're kind of in the same position that we were last year is that, you know, we have probably thirty cars on order that we're not gonna get. So, so I think there's some factors like that. You know, I think, you know, in talking, like, when I've talked to Moab Express about it, they're out there, if they have, if they have scheduled shuttles, you know, so. They'll be out there and then they're happy to add on to those scheduled shuttles. It's the whole, when they don't have scheduled shuttles, shuttles, it's hard to go out there and just wait for people to, to come off, you know?
With the whole.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're, and like, our business is the same too, where it's like, if we have cars that are reserved, we'll go out and man that office. And we'll be there for it, and then we'll get the other people coming in. But there's a lot of times where we just can't afford to go out and sit there. We don't have reservations, because a lot of times, those times, we don't get any reservations, you know? So I think that, like, Moab Express is kind of in that same, same pattern. So I think, you know, but I, to me, I think like what you guys are kind of saying is like, maybe we're doing an averagely good job of promoting the airline. You know, there are people, you know, they're three-quarters full, or, you know, they're getting there. But then, once they get here, they don't know how to finish off the experience. And so maybe that's where we need to, to concentrate this marketing money, is how do we, how do we finish the experience? You know, how do we say, you've got the air tours, now you need to get into town, you know, and stuff? So, you know, I've, I've been out there quite a bit and people are like, town's twenty miles away.
So is that fair? I mean, often when you have a plane ticket, the airline will try to upsell you on the whole lobby and car rental. Is there any way to just work with the airline to, as part of the ticketing process, to just inform people?
Like a package, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there is, yeah, but I, I mean, for us, like, like, we've tried to jump on that and, and we've tried to like sell car rentals, you know, through TripAdvisor, you know, so. It's like a twenty to thirty percent commission that they want. And so a lot of it, like, we just don't have that in, in that rate.
Right, you don't have that.
Yeah, I don't have that wiggle room, you know, and so.
I just wonder if SkyWest could say.
Yeah.
It's twenty miles from nowhere. They need something, here are the options.
Yeah, and all these guys, yeah.
Or could, there could even be one point of contact that could be discovered, no.
Right. Well, I mean, that's, like, visitor education is what we're dealing right now with time entry, right? So we're, we're targeting people who are already looking for our area, and we're saying, hey, this is, this is your, you need to know this, right? And we could do a fairly similar type of strategy where we're looking at people who are kind of looking at booking either from our general area or to our general area. And I'm sure there's some way to take some kind of smart data approach to that. Or some vendor will sell us that data, sell our, add people that data. And, and then at that point, you know, have a page on our website or have some kind of piece of marketing material, whether it's a video or something like that, that is kind of providing that, hey, this is, this is an opportunity to kind of have this like smooth, seamless transition from wherever you live, kind of straight to the door, you know, to the trailhead, basically, without having to drive through the middle of the desert. And here's how you do it, you know, fly, you get in the happy Moab Express bus that you book ahead of time. Book it ahead of time. And, you know, there's other things that you can do, where you can, that kind of message that's really targeted, we could certainly do, I think.
I think a lot of people too, like, so when I moved here, I didn't know, so I didn't know we had an airport for one. And then when I moved here, I didn't, so like, I don't like to fly on small planes. I like to fly on normal-sized, like seven fifty-sevens. And so like, I just, right, I just assumed that Moab would have Cessnas as all. And so when I flew to Pennsylvania, I was like, oh, I, I have to fly through here. Then I looked up, I purposely looked at the flight, like, looked at the size of the plane to be like, can I fly on this smaller plane? And I looked at Grand Junction and I was like, it's the same plane.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. So like, most people don't realize that. And then also with the price of gas, as high as it is right now, it's probably cheaper to fly if you're flying one person from here to Salt Lake than to drive it.
Well, and the flight subsidizes.
Probably don't realize that.
It's a flat rate because it's an essential air service.
Exactly.
Fluctuate the, the flights, the market, that's my understanding.
I think I'm interested.
All right.
I booked one of my employees a month out to fly to Denver to pick up a bus. And, like, last week, last Monday, they were two eighty-four.
Okay, yeah, because I thought it was like one ninety.
Yeah, it's usually one ninety-nine.
I was like, what? So that must have been a full flight, and we got the last seat. Yeah.
Jared Hill told us fifty-two days is the magic number if you don't want to get an inexpensive flight.
Fifty-two days.
Fifty-two days, but remember when he told us that?
Oh, wait, you weren't on the.
Okay, well, this is a good discussion, maybe I can share what's in the application that's been approved. And think through, oh, this is good to go, or we need to change these things. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Can anybody online see this, this tab open? Okay. It's hard for me to read, but that's okay. I'm just gonna read this, this text here. So, question is, what destination Moab are we promoting? We will be promoting Moab Grand County with two national parks and or state park, blah, 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 we know that part. We will promote outdoor activities, biking, hiking, rafting, canyon airing with the recreation responsibly messaging. We will focus on the direct flights to Moab on SkyWest, United, Chicago, Denver, and Moab. Then in Northern Utah from SkyWest Delta, we will promote, okay, so that's somewhat to, to Moab. We will promote the ease of arriving at Canyonland's usual airport, quick access to your luggage and short trip to outdoor adventures or arrival to downtown Moab. The goal is to encourage visitors to fly in as they will be lodging, meals, car rental, outfitters, and more. This visitor and demographic will be spending more and staying longer. For the pandemic, the information SkyWest shared, Denver was their number-one market and Chicago was the number-two market for them. The ability to have more flights will create more fuel sales for Grand County, more car rental sales for enterprise and Canyonland Jeep rentals, conflict of interest much, thus increasing airport revenue. In looking at the airline hubs, Chicago is United's headquarters, and while Atlanta is that Delta's hub, Salt Lake City is one of their main hubs outside of Atlanta. Because of the aircraft size, range demand, and other factors, our plans to go up are going to be to close the airline hubs. Right, that's supposed to be time to cheat, Jason. According to Expedia, Chicago is currently our fifth strongest market driving searches for states in Moab. When you look at Expedia's data for which markets are booking the strongest, Chicago falls out of the top ten and the below position. Low conversions indicate a market with huge potential to convert to future travelers who are staying longer to spend. Out of the top fifteen markets for booking, Chicago accounted for the strongest ADR two thirty-seven. For Utah, when we look closer at people who'd be willing to travel in the offseason, Utah's the most common, as you can see, this is. We will target Chicago, Illinois, okay, how will you target your audience? We'll target the Chicago, Illinois Midwest market and Northern Utah with connected TV. CTV is the perfect large format medium to use for this campaign, everything layered and data, and to the. And we will layer in data such as patch travel patterns, interests, demographics, and behavioral traits. We will also have access to reporting benchmarks such as website lists, hotel bookings, custom surveys. Looks like slightly more into the Chicago area based on the size and being a less first market. The video assets we will use will have sustainable recreation messages to educate our audience on what to expect. Digital out-of-home will be used to build and maintain broader market research digital channels to be supported without a home in both markets. You will participate in the UPTC off-in-state visual outdoor package providing placement across the Los Angeles front of Utah. We'll also use paid social in the Chicago market. Paid social posts utilization, paid social posts utilizing and AV testing videos and images will promote. SkyWest United, SkyWest Delta, and Moab, benefits of the destination, even specific destination events that attract or score safe visitors in Chicago market. We will serve inspirational messaging, educating audiences on how to recreate responsibly and safe travel to the area that will enhance their experience. We will also use sojourn, programmatic, display video in the Chicago market partnering with proven programmatic partner experience. Expert experience in terms of space. We'll be able to leverage their data in marketing insights, we'll partner with sojourn, programmatic, display video. I don't know, I should read this whole thing. I think that's, that captures the main energy. The last sentence, our main focus of this in-state content is to bring in our protective serve philosophy, educate local benefits, supporting local businesses on the shoulders, keep them updated on the best way to enjoy the app. The same type of thing, keeping the local fans safe. So originally intended to start February of this year, run throughout the, run through, through, through a year.
Let's connect the TV.
I, maybe Robert knows this better.
Yeah, it's like.
Hulu and Netflix, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you can target a specific. Because they have data on you. Right.
That's cool.
Right, it's not, it's not just TV on the cable thing that they just hope you are watching. You have an account so they know things about you, basically, right? And the same, the same thing's for Spotify connected audio, so that they are targeted, and thus they can charge you more, basically. And then digital out-of-home is like digital display boards, like gas station things, swords.
Grocery stores. Sometimes they got bus stops, they have visual boards.
Right.
Things like that.
With that, but also the, like, the videos of gas stations and stuff, okay? And those are usually like video or static or could be any of them.
It could be either.
Paid social's mentioned. Don't know what the UPTC off-in-state digital outdoor package is, like, layering that terminology. What was it? UPTC off-in-state visual outdoor package? Yeah, okay, so there's a couple of things that we could ask, what to help us like understand, which is right here, but. Is there anything else to throw over that we discussed here?
So is the question whether we should, whether we should, because we, we were supposed to start two months ago. What's, I guess, what's the question? Should we?
I guess my question.
Keep going with this.
Yeah, so, so we haven't launched it. Timeline would be, we have to get an RFP approved by the commission, and someone has to bid on it, it's gonna be approved, and then they start it. So I think, you know, we're looking at probably the latter half of the calendar year for this. And within that context, you know, I think we've all been strategically about probably looking at some of this occupancy data and figuring out, like, we should be targeting when we're not getting enough people and, you know, maybe the latter half of the flying season, rather than just blanketing the entire calendar for the second half of the year, being kind of strategic with this would be one kind of change I would want to think about. And, you know, I think we could have, if there's anything we want to change in terms of the way we're conveying it, you know, connected TV, digital outdoor, I think those are all can be changed, in my opinion, depending on what people think would be best for, best bang for buck on this. And we could make it slightly more generic with perspective of.
Could it go for, like, could this program be used for two years? You know, like, say, like, like two six-month increments?
Right.
For like the winter months, you know, for two years or whatever?
I'm, I'm fairly sure that it's a, it's an annual thing, because you have to fill out a report at the end to get the rest of the money. So we've, we've requested the, basically the upfront cash for this. And then there's gonna be another application for this program this summer. So I, my understanding, I mean, I could ask, I could certainly ask.
No, will that make sense if we just apply for it again?
So does the hundred and fifty have to be used by December of this year then? Or do we, since it wasn't gonna start till February, is it still allocated through the end of February of twenty twenty-three?
I think they give us a whole two years to do any follow-up reporting. But the question, you know, as, as written, is gonna wrap up February next year. So I would imagine we can, we can take as much time until then if we wanted to. And I could ask, you know, the person who manages the program, hey, we kind of got bogged down in some other things, there's something that we can break out for this year, next year, and then whatever we apply for. I would imagine that might factor into our application for a future grant, maybe like, well, you already have money, you didn't get it yet, we're gonna give you less.
Right.
When do we do the application?
I believe that it kind of, it's a summer time cycle, so I think it like opens like June, July-ish, and then in August is when they convene and score everything.
So we'd want to have something in motion happening before we hear that the application.
So we can say, we got a plan, and here's our next year plan. And I think we should also think about that for, you know, when this application opens up.
I think it's worth, I think it's worth.
Yeah.
But it's, it's free money, you know, to be put towards it, you know, if we get, I think it's worth pursuing to like July first through June thirtieth or something, change the program, you know, that, and maybe tweaking it to.
Yeah. Well, and then we're gonna look at these numbers in a minute, but, you know, like, August is traditionally kind of a trough between the two prime seasons. And that falls off at the end of the year, I don't know when the flights end, but, you know, trying to boost the tail end of the year with pretty super targeted and say, hey, we've got low visitation in August. Let's try to pump back these flights and then at the end of the year.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense to.
And then you could, you could have like a low level of spend throughout, just so it's reaching some people kind of constantly, but then you're kind of really targeting these time periods.
And I have the schedule there for the meeting.
So when, when does it end, really, I think is the question.
Well, so Delta ends in November. So November thirtieth is the last one. And so, so November thirtieth through March third is when we go down to seven weekly, just, it's just United.
I mean, looking at occupancy numbers, if you just looked at July, August, and November as months as a target for flights, and you're leaving the busy season here, it's like, we don't need the boosts. Except for you could be like super targeted and just look at people who are already looking to visit the area and say, hey, fly instead. And then for those lower occupancy months, can we get more flights in? I think that, yeah, and I'm curious how the, Mary, how's your respective kind of commission brain for a moment?
So how much, I didn't, so this will be presented to the commission?
So what I think, what I would do is, I would take this conversation, I kind of double-checked with Kelly at the state to make sure that any changes we make are fine. I put together an RFP, and then I bring that RFP to the commission, because the commission would have to sign off on that. And that would be the, the window for discussion with the commission, say, hey, yes, actually, we will do this, we're taking into account the ordinance and our priorities, and we think that this is a good thing to go forward.
What you will be, what, my prediction, what you will be questioned?
Well, like, that's the next step, right? That's the next, just want to make sure that everybody's.
I, I think any of the commissioners might ask you, is, since this is SkyWest that will be doing this, can we guarantee that they're not going to promote the TUSA?
Well, I mean, it's only our advertising.
It's our advertising.
It's our, there is a twenty grand advertising grant that they offer that's separate from this, that I think we're planning to use to promote the airport on like some billboards, if we've got a really good deal on a billboard through it up. So that we're saying, if you're driving from GJ and you flew in, you're like, oh, flying a flight, I signed on.
Okay, so, did, did I understand the airport meeting that, that grant from SkyWest?
They signed to like a local campaign, SkyWest, and they're gonna match it.
Doesn't require a match.
It doesn't?
It does not, it's twenty grand of free money.
I got the sense that they were in charge of it, maybe.
They have to approve it. It has to fit their design guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, so we basically, and we've done this, Robert's actually created a billboard.
Okay, then, then that would be the question that I know. So we, we'll, we'll have enough control over it that it will fall within our advertising guidelines.
Yeah, we have full creative control.
If you can answer that, that would be about the only question. If you can answer that, that would be about the only question I think you could get out.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I think that what I would like to add into it is like, you know, if you're using the airport and then once we can have that responsible recreation, once you get here, here's how you take care of the community when you're visiting and being a steward and when you're on the trail, here, here's some like important tips to and link all that together in a way that feels comprehensive rather than like stamping, just like fly into and do responsible recreation, kind of make it a part of it, which I think is what I think the commission is looking for.
Yeah.
And then I think making it clear that we're not targeting already high season and we're looking at kind of strategically these low season times. I would, I think that the other thing in that's a high spend visitor that's not going to, you know, be bringing a super big, you know, rig and parking in Willow Springs and all of that.
What if they're flying, if they, we don't really have a lot of, like, they probably would break, you know what I mean?
Well, that's the whole, I think that's the, I think that's the, the theory.
Yeah.
Right. In terms of.
You would hope not.
Eventually I would like to define what, what we would like to look at for what's a quality visitor. So when we do these things in the future, there's a mandate from the commission and travel council of here's what we want to, here's what we're looking for rather than, you know, trying to reach between points.
I think that's excellent. Yeah. I don't think it will help with the film call.
That's a really good point. Just, just talking about the film production stuff that's happening. Yeah. So I, I feel like I've gotten what I need out of this. I don't think we need to like vote on this necessarily. If you wanted to, you could, you know, vote to approve to the board with this. And then that's something that I can see the travel council loads of. But not necessarily.
Not necessary though. They look at it.
Yeah.
They look at it. We always look at it when it's planning and zoning for sure. We look at it.
Right. Like if the planning commission is approved.
It did, it was did the travel council. They do look at it. So I, I think Bodhiha doesn't take much time. It's worth it.
Yeah. I'm thinking timeline. There's two ways to do it. I could, could either say, thank you. I'm going to go craft an RFP now that'll have all this kind of information. What we want to do with it. Bring that back to the next meeting, second week of May. And then y'all see kind of the final approval and then you're actually approving a real concrete thing. And then we can have it at like the next week's commission. Okay. Cause that gives me some time because I actually do way too many things. Cool.
Next, the recap of the local business grants workshops.
And you want to speak to that? I can speak to that. Sure. August, I each let a public workshop on the two grants that we were working on. The one that we spoke to this body last week, last meeting, small tours of business marketing grant. I thought the workshops went really well. I was unfortunately out of town for August because he was out of town for mine. So I can only imagine that we were totally alive and it's great. I had some good feedback that we have incorporated into what's shaping up to be a final proposal that we want to review with the mission next week. Or sorry, two weeks from now, just about. No, a week.
Next week.
Yeah.
Actually, wait for today.
Yeah. Thank you. Week from today. Let's see. My workshop was Thursday, March 31st at the mark. I had about 15 people in attendance. Good representation of businesses and profits. We got some great questions and really good feedback on how to make sure the program is inclusive. I think the best question I got, this is something we had accounted for, but just hadn't really laid out in the language of the grant design is how do we define a return on investment for a nonprofit? We're not necessarily looking at that, but you know, increase in their services or increase in just the amount of people that they can help do whatever their mission is. It's of great value to us. I think case in point here would be like CFI, which does have kind of a force component to their existence, but they are a nonprofit. So, you know, fitting into this particular program. Yes, thank you. So I don't know. Did you have any, can you want to have a workshop?
Um, yeah. So mine was the grand center evening. We served canyon country pizza and went, went great, maybe eight people there, some new faces, which is really useful. People found out about it because we put ads in the newspaper, did social media stuff and because they, I got an email. So kind of all of our marketing channels are working and we're building a good list of folks in the community. Which is really, I think, makes me feel good that we're kind of getting a larger reach in general as an office. It didn't get like a lot of big questions, kind of just like little marginal things, which makes me think that we're kind of moving on the right direction. At least for a place to start and launch these grants, kind of more or less on the timeline.
Yeah. So on the note of the timeline, we are hoping to bring the proposals to the commission next week, which means that I'm going to be submitting them to be added to the commission agenda. At the end of this week, I had hoped to have the proposal finished for today. Unfortunately I don't, but my plan is to send out that final grant program proposal to all of you midday tomorrow at the latest. And with that timeline in mind, I would love for any comments, questions, clarifications that you think are worthy of bringing up before we bring it to the commission so we can work on it. Please feel free to call me, email me, whatever. We definitely want to, you know, we've been talking about this for a few months. There could be something really simple that we're missing. We really appreciate the feedback. Right now it's only six pages long. I don't think it'll get much longer, but it's a little dry, but I appreciate you taking time to help us check ourselves. So that'll be coming for me tomorrow.
And I want to think that was brought up in August meeting was assistance with grant ready. Do you remember that?
Yep.
But that was really interesting that someone asked about it. So just for all the other businesses doing it, like a lot of people haven't done it. So do we have a good resource for that or do you plan on adding something?
Yeah.
You know, like that one, the one person that was there.
No, but you're right, because there's a lot of nonprofits that grants is their bread and butter to know what they're doing. And it's easy for businesses. It's like, I have all this time that I have to spend on like non-productive. It's like, maybe I'll get money if it's worth the time that I'm putting into this. And, uh, you know, it's, if you haven't done a grant before, it's a little, you know, it's, it's unfamiliar territory. And so something that I, that we thought about was, um, you know, having at the very least, kind of a list of grant writing professionals that folks can consult with to assist them in the grant process. That's a whole industry, right? It's people who help people write grants. And then, and then, you know, we could add scholarship support or something like that on a case by case basis where, hey, I, you know, I really am not familiar with grants. Maybe I'm like an immigrant or something like this. And like, I have a great, great proposal, like a great idea, but I just, I don't have the time or the, or the capacity to figure this out. And I need some help. So I think I don't, I haven't quite figured that out, but I think that was a really good insight that we got.
I'm thinking, I thought it was interesting in August when he, he did ask how people found out about the meeting and a lot of people said the Facebook ad or calendar or the promotion that you did.
It's great.
Do you know if you found out yours, how people found out or what do you?
You know, I, I didn't talk, I didn't actually ask them directly. I did create that Facebook ad. Bucks. So that's great.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's exciting.
Twenty dollars boost. Yeah. Yeah. So one thing that is written into the proposal right now is that we do intend to connect applicants with grant writing resources other than just the S P D C, which is a big part of this, but also separate from this particular discussion. So I think that assuming that we keep to the timeline that we are so far on track to, which is to sort of launch the grant in May and June. By launching, I mean, get the word out to the public, show them all the different resources we have and how to apply and all that. And then in July, actually open up the application period that gives us about the rest of this month to start putting together those resources. And I have confidence that we can do that and it will live where all the other grant resources live. So on that note, if you have ideas about assistance for grant writing for folks who are unable or unsure how to do that, we'll definitely take suggestions. Cause we want to put together a good toolkit.
Well, I always told they used to offer that.
Who's up for what?
Well, I always told it for a while was offering.
Grant running support.
I know at one time we were doing something. It would be worth calling.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just remembered that they were offering something about grant support.
Yeah. I guess any other questions? Next step is we're going to take the commission.
I'm really excited about this.
Thank you.
Just really hoping that it's, it's nice for this family, for the month, the TRT and the CRT to be going back into the community in such a positive way. It's going to help our image of all.
Yeah. Cool. And this board's been great for input on the process. So thank you all.
One thing, when I took businesses, I did get right back feedback from someone just like, is it bringing more people in? What the heck? And I was like, no, we're actually trying to give money back to local businesses to support the system. So I had.
In market, in market marketing.
So it was kind of nice that, I don't know, that's the feedback I heard from people I shared it with, just like misunderstanding, but then I corrected it and they're excited like, oh, okay. Money, here you go. Stickers, done.
Stickers and stuff. Okay. Any questions or how we could do that?
Next review of the occupancy, TRT and TRCC data.
Yeah. So, um, I think kind of upon reflection of kind of last couple of meetings, to really try to catch up and make time that you have. We have it. It's been brought to our attention and we've been thinking about this, that really they kind of provide that ongoing updated data that we have at the office to this board and to the community in general, there's something that's lacking. And so we see that and we wanted to start kind of that a little bit more today. I dove into some of the tax revenue and expenditure stuff from our office. And then Chris Barrett got sick COVID and so he was unable to now pull some of that data. And what I did get was a really, really heaving mess of P S. So, so that's something that I think longer term, looking at TRT revenues, TRCC revenues and expenditures both. I think not only for this board in an ongoing fashion, but also annually to the public is something we really want to do a better job of. Because it's really complicated and confusing and, you know, at least having like a little one hand, a one page handout about this is how this works. And this is how it's been spent over the last couple of years. And ongoing. So what we do have today at least, there's something that we had very much on hand to share and kind of discuss a little bit was some of this S T R occupancy data. So for folks who maybe aren't familiar, the hotel people certainly are. This is kind of market level occupation and ADR or kind of Moab area. And so my understanding of how this program works, says if you're a hotel, you submit certain information basically to get it in response. You get comps, right? So whatever your comparable hotel is, you're being able to see what their occupancy is and what their ADR is, but you don't get to see necessarily every firm on the market. Or you get market levels.
Yeah. And then you get your competitive market, how every segmentation out. So you can do, you can see like five to seven hotels to pretty fun. If you say isn't your competitive set.
So, um, we subscribe to this data as a DMO. So we get market level information. And then also tells us like who's reporting basically, so which, which firms in the area are reporting this data. We also get, we're subscribed to the same for not second short-term rentals. So Airbnb, Airbnb is at all. And before we dive into this, I should say that we're kind of having a process of re-infigurating and getting new contracts with vendors. And you had the dashboard folks so that we have a much better, easy reporting going forward. So know that this is going to be a more robust kind of reporting going forward, but I don't, I don't know. I just want to kind of comment what they're, what they're seeing on here to me. You know, January, February in general, we're better outperformed last year and then we're seeing this kind of tail down recent week for that April second. Don't know if that's a time entry related thing or what that number looks like. Maybe a hotel open or is it just kind of but that was something I noticed. The prices, yeah.
Screen share.
Yes. Okay, point.
I think it's awesome.
Sorry, online people.
Interesting with spring breaks and holidays, how those shift. I know that's, we had always looked at with this too. So how that falls. Do you, can you spring break times? Do you have?
I always just say spring break for the market and the area is it depends on what Salt Lake is theirs in each county. And so I always tell like our hotel staff, you should see spring breakers all the way from March till the middle of April. Um, just in my experience. And I will say, I know Daniel's here, but I will say this is the worst Jeep Safari hotels I've ever had, at least my. You're the slowest we've ever been, ever.
I was noticing all of.
Oh, yeah. We are the slowest we've ever been in hotels.
Yeah.
One hundred percent correct across the board at all, all hotels that I deal with and I know about. Lot of factors for, for that, but one of the primary factors I believe is two years without it, people found other things to do. And then suddenly gas prices are skyrocketed and people don't want to drive that far.
Exactly. Yeah. And it's heavy and they're expensive to tow all your trailers here.
Yeah. Do you, so you, you're thinking we've got fuel prices, maybe doing other stuff.
Yep.
Airbnbs.
Airbnbs are spiking like crazy.
You can actually park your trailer there.
And you have a whole kitchen and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also I've noticed a lot of travelers are reducing, so like if they booked a week at a hotel, they're reducing their time. So they'll say, oh, I have to check out early, um, at least what I've been seeing at our four hotels. Um, because they're like, we can't really afford to be here much longer because of the price of gas and the price of everything else.
Interesting.
So they said food has gone up 20 to 30% in every market over the last year. So they're like, we're trying to like minimize what we're actually doing as a family. And they're also doing more destination places. So like a lot of my friends, I'm like, instead of going to Moab, which they normally would for Easter and things. They're like, we can go to St. Lucia, which is crazy for similar prices. Because they're targeting different prices. So some of my friends went there, some of them went to Cancun where normally they'd come here for camping or for fun for the weekend, but they were like, it's almost the same price when I look at the cost of Moab sustain hotels. And so it's almost like we outpriced tourism, which is really sad. It's similar to what Hawaii did.
Right. Well, I mean, if you look at ADR, it's like for March, it's like $50 bucks.
Yeah.
From last year. And then that is like almost a hundred dollars more than 2020.
Yeah. I thought it was interesting to see one month previously, we broke a hundred on ADR and then now where we start to break 200 ADR. It just keeps coming sooner.
Right.
Despite what could be, you know, lags off.
Right. And most markets that I've come from, your ADR will grow anywhere from like a dollar to like two to $5 is a normal growth pattern for ADR.
From your.
For year, every year. Yeah. So like a year, every year. And we're like, as an ownership, they'll be like, okay, we're going to increase ADR by 50 cents or a dollar. These huge upticks of ADR between 30, 40, $50, that's not normal. So it's almost like a hyperinflated market all of a sudden than the last two years.
Like once two years has been a high.
Is, so when, when on the hotel side, are you seeing that revenues are bouncing up? You're having less.
Oh, it's horrible. Yeah.
Okay. So you're seeing higher rates because everybody's competing.
Right.
Or can get.
But you're not hitting budgets or anything. No, no.
I mean, it depends on the hotel. I've had no problem with my budgets. I, I think the real key on it all is last two years, we've been very spoiled to have COVID drying people to us as well. There may be some Moab fatigue. We're not advertising as much during the summer months. People, there's the assumption that people will just come here without the advertising. And now there's other places open and we may be losing some of that market too.
Are we also building?
Say again?
Have they overbuilt?
Right. Like there's too much supply.
They were, you know, for a while, it was just insane.
Yeah. And that's what I'm kind of curious is if like TRT revenues are.
Yeah. And that's what I'm kind of curious is if like TRT revenues are are they staying, even though you're booking less rooms, they're at a higher rate. So is TRT staying level or is it dipping, you know, and, you know, so.
Well, TRT lags by a couple of months. So the most recent TRT is January and that actually is representative of November. So we only have November TRT actuals. And I don't, I I haven't seen those. So we wouldn't know.
There are so many more places to stay.
The Star Report does have supply, so it'll tell you how many rooms there are.
I'm just kind of curious, like how do our average occupancy rates compare to like, you know, Anaheim, you know, or or other places is, is that an industry standard, you know, 69% or are we below kind of the industry standard of?
I don't know. I'd have to, do you know, Daniel, like I'd have to look into the other markets because I don't get comp sets.
Yeah, I mean, to say, how do we compare to other markets is a tough one. Other markets are year round. Ours is seasonal, so it really affects our overall occupancy. Because we're, we're not selling out three, three months out of the year. Anaheim probably runs pre-COVID in the 80 to 90% occupancy range would be my guess.
That that's a year round.
That's a year round.
Year round, year round occupancy. Moab runs roughly in the 70% range and that's with three months that are 20%. So really historically, Moab's occupancy has been phenomenal. There is several hundred more rooms that we're competing with this year and now the the Timeshare property world market is running it as a hotel, which adds to the wash.
But you could take the monthly percentages, you know, eight, 2021 and compare that to like other tourism related communities, just not the full 12 month average that you could do.
Yeah, on a month by month basis, go with your peak season and we compare very admirably. You know, in our peak season, we're as busy as any market I've ever seen.
Absolutely.
Um, any, any follow up? But because we could, you know, we can dive deeper into this, you know, make a priority to answer any questions on on this information or pull from other data sets to help answer questions related to this. Is there any outstanding questions or concerns on what they can help us understand about our market?
This could be online on our website or counties?
Probably should do that. I think in the future, we'd like to have something where more data publicly available at some level.
You know, I think this brings up a real kind of where we want to be in the world, you know, or where we want to be sat, you know, because like as businesses and as tourism related businesses, you know, in your hotel, you're, you're like, man, I want to be this 80% year round, you know, stuff. But as a community and as the commission, you know, and I can see them going like, hey, we're, we're doing, we have 30% less people. Yet our TRT tax is is the same, you know, we're good with that.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, you know, so there's this kind of this balance of, you know, of what, what, you know, what the county wants and what, you know, the business community wants, you know, and trying to figure out, you know, where we're at, you know, stuff. Because, you know, you could like, Daniel said, we haven't been advertising, you know, yet revenues are, they're bad, and you're, you're saying, you know, or or hotel room rates are down. That they revenue, you know, so I I think that it kind of brings up this of where we want to be and what we're happy with.
Because the town does give visitor fatigue.
Something, so a few things, as we've kind of alluded to many times, we got, we're working with different data sets, we're working to find a vendor dependent house that all in place. So we're happy to feel like individual requests for the time being, we do have right now reliably through last fall these numbers by day. So we can report on ADR and equity and other STR indices by day. I just felt that the monthly was a little bit easier to look at. Also, our every, at the end of every month, we do get this report here and this benchmarks us against some other communities in our area. And if we had an inkling of other communities that we wanted to benchmark ourselves against, certainly I could reach out to STR and see if we could add them to our chart. Like maybe we don't want to hear about Washington County as much as like you said, Anaheim or something like that. So if you have ideas on how, you know, we could better benchmark ourselves, let me know and I can reach out and see what flexibility we have. But we get these reports at the end of every month and this is a more high level of looking at some of the other counties that are in the STR universe.
If you want an accurate comparison, Sedona is about the best one. We'll find similar markets, similar, similar tourists. Everything down to even having an off season like we do.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, okay, well, um, this is good fodder for discussion. I really appreciate the thoughtful on this. And it's kind of a good transition. If we don't have any more questions on this kind of stuff, we have to love folks here, have a bit of a some some written press. The the folks at Arches are unable to make it today, but I did get a call from Patty earlier. And kind of high level is from, from because their perspective, they're getting really high quality kind of reviews from people who have experienced the park, so the people who are going into the park and experiencing it since the time that tree have gone out of their way to thank, you know, Park Service and saying that they're really appreciating the 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 new experience under the time that tree thing. And they're seeing, you know, obviously need to make adjustments, you know, I think, Sharon wants to speak just a little bit and maybe we'll that love is that huge no show rates, right? And so meaning that, meaning that if I'm, if I'm a really good planner and it's January and I'm going to come here in April, I'm just going to book a slot for 8 a.m. every day of the week. Those are $2 each. And I don't know exactly what day I'm going to go in. So that gives me, that gives me an option. It's easy for me. If I'm last minute, if I'm not a planner, then that reduces my abilities. But there, so basically what that means, the park is adjusting their 6 p.m. day before release quotas to adjust for how many people are actually showing up, right? So they're increasing the amount available the day before. Something else that they've seen is that that for that first slot of the day, they anticipated, much like what happened in Glacier, is that for going to the Sun Road. Is that there was a ton of people who were kind of screwed the system and going in the morning, you know, before the 6 a.m. slot. And so they reduced the amount of slots available for that nine, five, 10, or excuse me, 6 to 6 to 7, 7 to 8, because what happened in Glacier was you did, I did my homework. I got my, my ticket and I got in and it's full of people who snuck in before the thing started and now I piss. So they haven't had that type of kind of parking conflict, but they, so now they can, you know, they can increase that quota, right? For that 6 to 7, 7 to 8. And the last thing that they've seen is that definitely rush at at 5 o'clock, but it's taken about 45 minutes to clear that and they haven't had to close the gates and the parking lots have been able to absorb that. Like it hasn't been like I, now I'm here at 6 o'clock for for sunset or whatever and I can't park it. So so from their perspective so far, so good, obviously it's an operational, that year will pull this off. But they're excited to maybe have a month in review update at the next meeting and maybe have a bigger conversation. The bigger reporting that we had talked about initially.
I have a question with that. Does anyone know if they have, unless it's like, do you have to click on every single day to see if it's filled out or can they see, can you see like a full calendar at once?
There's a calendar. If you go on recreation.
To see what dates sold out.
Yeah. And I guess one quick question before we turn it over. Melissa and Robert did a really good job of sending out some email communications to our, all of our tourism facing businesses and follow up, providing rack cards. I don't know, I guess with people that are here, has that been useful? Is there anything that like we missed? Yes, either way.
So at the hotels, we hand about all the time. Very useful. So thank you.
Awesome. Okay, good job team. Um, it's going to keep going. I guess one other thing I wanted to note is that we did approve 50 grand for kind of studying and evaluating what happens during time entry to kind of help lead our understanding that this is something that we want to support forward and plug it to what the PPS research in the park is. And that was originally a proposal from a agreement that USU. And so I had some follow up conversations with ways at their department, just to see like what, what's happening, what research is already happening and what would be useful to support. And the the love, the love that are up top. We're, we're basically at the, in the in between, nothing land at the bottom. We're at the presentations, if any, defer to the end.
Okay. I'm going, wait a minute, those are all the love people.
Yeah, they're ready. They're ready. They're shopping at the bit. And I want to give them the time. But I just wanted to mention that I think that was that money was preauthorized by the county commission and I feel really good about what we've been putting together, remains of the USU building in Russell Grass City yesterday. And there's basically a whole slew of studies that are going from, you know, the singular visitor in the park all the way to looking regionally at impacts. So planning to go ahead and support that research. And one of the big outcomes is going to be synthesizing that and providing insights to this board, to the business community, to the community at large, to get those understandings of what happened during that. Right? So that's the last thing I'll mention. And then I guess I'll pass it over to whoever wants to speak in love with it.
Did you just refer to us as Love Land, August? That's a new one. I I and I, and I kind of like it and thank you and hello, August and hello, folks. From Moab Area Travel Council and beyond, it's a pleasure to be able to connect with you. Joining me are Hannah and Jonathan and Dallas. And, you know, I'll quickly turn the time over to Hannah and and Jonathan here. We are going to share a campaign update plus recent travel trends that we thought would be a benefit to the advisory committee and certainly open to answer any questions with the work that we are doing and with the information we that we are going to present. So Hannah, I'll go ahead and turn time to you unless Jonathan, you want to say a few words?
No, I'm still trying to find internet, so.
That was me covering for you, Jonathan, just to make sure.
Thank you.
All right. So hopefully everyone can see our slides. We're on the agenda slide. So we really are excited just to give you guys a little snapshot of a couple of weeks in market with the Arches Time Entry Reservation Campaign. So Dallas and I will kind of walk through a little bit of an update there and then we will transition to Jonathan who'll go, who will go over kind of some travel trend landscape information. So we're really excited about this campaign. Obviously, this campaign in nature is different to, you know, any kind of past tourism campaigns because it's purely trying to get the word out of this new time entry system that's in effect to consumers who are very much interested in going to Moab. We're, we're targeting these audiences through a number of channels and we're really making sure that our efforts are going towards consumers who are showing intent to go to Arches National Park or Moab in the upcoming months. And so as a reminder, this is really the holistic campaign that's in motion right now. We really wanted to make sure that our paid search, so PPC ads really got into motion in March. We know that people are planning and they need to understand that they need to plan a little bit more this year and we really wanted to make sure that people who are actively searching got that information very, very quickly. Right after that, we did launch paid social and then in April, we launched YouTube and TripAdvisor. And so again, we're really, really honing in on regional markets. There is some national, you know, audiences across TripAdvisor so that this, this media mix is really great because we're obviously leveraging Google. So making sure that we're really getting this information in real time to people who are searching. And paid social, we're able to really utilize interests and and people who've gone to the website, specific pages, so that we're targeting interested consumers who are looking to visit YouTube, anyone who is looking at, you know, Moab content, Southern Utah content, we're leveraging similar keywords there so that if you're searching in you, you know, YouTube or Google, this information will be presented to you. And then obviously on an OTA, so someone who is actively booking their vacation to Moab will get those messages. And we really wanted to showcase these messages and the creative and the thought that August and Melissa and Robert put into, you know, these ads. We did leverage TripAdvisor, so they were able to create these ads for us, but it was all the imagery and logos and the the copy was all driven by, you know, August and and Robert and Melissa. So this is just a visualization of if I was looking to book at Moab on TripAdvisor, all the different elements that would pop up. And all of these clicks will be going to the reservation page on Discover Moab. Again, to the left, we're leveraging a 15 second and a 30 second spot. Again, this is a little bit different than just your inspirational, you know, landscape type of tourism experience. We really want to make sure that on YouTube, within the first five seconds, people understand exactly what they need to know, which is why we have some of obviously some written copy over the the voiceover so that even if it's muted, they're getting that information. Again, on social, we're really trying to hone in on the date ranges and the timeframe so that if they just look really quick, they go, oh, my gosh, this is something that's happening right now. I need to learn more. And then, you know, through PPC, wanting to make sure that all the messaging and all of the accurate information is shown across, you know, all of these different ads. So again, you know, we're just ramping up. We've served, you know, nearly 2 million impressions across those channels. And again, we're targeting audiences who are actively researching or showing interest in Moab. Discover Moab is among the most visible site for Arches Reservation Terms. So again, it's great to leverage that visibility. And as a result, we've, you know, tracked nearly 14,000 clicks to that reservation landing page so far. On TripAdvisor, so after exposure of our ads on TripAdvisor, we're able to track an additional amount of view through conversion. So this is someone who saw one of those banner ads, they didn't click. So they didn't go directly to that page, but they then through search went to Discover Moab's website and majority of those additional view through conversions went to the Arches National Park page, which also then connects to the reservation page. So we kind of really thought through all of the consumer journey touch points and making sure that they're getting that accurate information.
Cool. And I wanted to hop in here with just a quick update on the paid search effort. As a reminder, you know, this seems very intuitive. We want to have a one to one relationship, right? If people are looking for this reservation system, obviously we need to be the ad that's relevant there. But we also wanted to serve this messaging for people who were searching for Arches National Park and the experiences therein without knowing about the reservation system. Or people who were just searching for a vacation to Moab and we wanted them to see this messaging as well. So those are a couple of different aspects of this paid search campaign. Again, in the early stages, we're seeing that 27% of impressions served through this campaign is resulting through a, is resulting in a click through to the website. And that's, that's well above benchmarks. I think that that just shows the landing page is working very well. It's offering the right information, right? The messaging and everything lines up. It's just a, it's a clear and intuitive user journey. You know, an aspect of this that is maybe a bit unique from other paid search campaigns is we really wanted to focus on dominating impression share and being the first visible result there, right? We want to make sure that we're telling this story and that we're, we're visible. So 70% of the time, Discover Moab ads are in that absolute first ad position. Another note I wanted to make here, through the Google Ads platform, we're able to see a bit of an insight into other websites that are bidding on these topics. And based on the data that we're seeing, Discover Moab is the leading site advertising for these topics that we're bidding in. And 60% of the time, very first within this competitive set, right? So that includes other OTAs, any other site that may be advertising or trying to share this message. And and to date, this has resulted in just about 32, five sessions through to the website, so 32,400 sessions through paid search ads to the website.
And then through paid social, so Facebook and Instagram, you know, we've reached almost 700,000 travelers. And so we're looking at not only clicks, but also engagement. So if anyone's sharing this content, so that's earned media, if anyone's saving it so they can activate it later. We all look at that culmination of engagements over impressions and we look at an engagement rate. So all of our channels have certain rates and things that we're in KPIs that we're striving for. And so our current engagement rate is 1.12%, just a little over our benchmark. And on the next slide, we'll kind of show what the, the current sentiment has been. But before we get to that, you know, YouTube, we just ramped up and so we want to obviously allow those impressions to to generate. And what we're really looking for with YouTube is just getting majority of those 15 and 30 second spots viewed. And so we are, you know, again, ramping up for that video completion rate, but our cost per view is very, very efficient currently. And one thing that we've been really. And one thing that we've been really excited about is, you know, we're looking at this constantly. You know, it's just people's enthusiasm about Moab, their understanding of of the new reservation system. You know, there's been maybe one or two posts that have been, you know, just more about questions and frustration about it. But there hasn't been nearly, you know, the amount of of negative kind of comments that, you know, we were kind of anticipating. So it's really, really great to see that people are enthusiastic about still coming to Moab and talking about their their past, you know, positive trips. And there also has been an increased amount of comments where people are adding their friends to it and talking about, hey, we should go, we need to plan this now. So we are looking at sentiment towards this and so far it's been quite positive. Before we shift gears to travel trends, are there any questions about the campaign so far?
I was just gonna ask. Do you have any like anecdotal insight to how the Moab specific? Kind of paid social is going, I guess for context, we asked love to do kind of a geo fets. A three two zip with a different message that's saying, you know, basically when your family and friends are visiting, be aware of type entry. Because I think sometimes we lose talking to our own community in some of this marketing. So we wanted to try that out with fear that maybe, you know, locals are going to have a more negative sentiment in general. Let's say like, you know. I just curious if you had any thoughts or feedback on that.
Yeah, August, thanks for that. That was the one that I was actually more afraid of. And there is actually the same amount of positivity or just them adding their friends and family. So we have not seen kind of an uproar or any any real negative where we've had to hide it or comment or delete. We've seen, I would say, the consumer, you know, outside of of Moab and then Moab locals is as of right now, a similar sentiment.
Great. I'll let Jonathan take over.
Okay, musical chairs. You know, this was all easier when we used to meet in person. It is great to see everyone and honestly, I'm very fortunate that I got to to jump in there at the very end of of the the last presentation. Because it's it's great to hear the conversation about ADRs are up, occupancy is down and where your comfort level is with that. Because I will have some slides in here about future bookings. And and for the purposes of this conversation, I want to hear how the the team is feeling in regards to what we're seeing currently. So diving into current trends. So as as we're all familiar with Salt Lake hat, like in terms of of the airport has recovered significantly more than than what the rest of the country has. But what I wanted to show you is what's happening with air travel today. And that is an air traveler who is very close to where we were in 2019. The light orange line is 2020 and you can see what happened at the start of the pandemic. Blue is 2021. You can see where we started to recover toward the fall of 2021. And then the red line is where we're at so far this year. And you actually see a couple of days that overlap here. And I think many in in air travel would say that everything's pointing to recovery. But then you look at what is the the increases in travel prices, which I will get to in a second. But one thing I wanted to promise to you guys, this 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 wave of research is I will not show you a daily COVID cases slide. It's probably the first time in, oh, I I don't know, two years that I'm not including in a presentation like this. And I'm saying for now, especially if you've seen the the news coming out of Philadelphia. Some destinations are starting to react or respond to what's happening as COVID cases start to recover. Luckily for now, we are not seeing the the hospitality rates in the way that we did in the early part of the pandemic. So it'll be very interesting to see what the traveler does. As it relates to expectations for the coronavirus outbreak. Orange line are people who think things are going to get much worse. The good news for now is that you still have the majority of the population feeling that things are going to get better rather than get worse. And it's actually those who think it's going to worsen at the lowest, the second lowest it's ever been. And obviously, last spring, we had people feeling the same way. And anyone who remembers what happened last summer, COVID cases spiked and then you saw the ensuing kind of concern happen from the population. Another positive in my mind as it relates to the the travel industry is that our traveler has gotten comfortable with the fact that coronavirus is here. But there's a way to travel safely. And and so in terms of who's saying that it's going to greatly impact their decision to travel in the next six months, only 20% of the population is is referring to that. One second. In this next kind of stat point, 91% Americans have a have travel plans in the next six months. And that's that's a massive amount. And honestly, during the the course of the pandemic, if you had asked this question the entire time, it actually ranged anywhere from 80% to 95%. And so I'm not surprised to see such a large percentage of the population looking at this. But what is completely different than the start of the pandemic? In the beginning of the pandemic, you had overwhelming, the overwhelming percentage of people saying that they were going to visit a destination they've traveled to in the past. As of right now, 55% of travelers are now prioritizing visiting a new destination. Right? So it's important to keep in mind travelers are out there looking for the next destination. As a as a travel marketer, that reminds me, it's time to start targeting the long tail markets, long distance markets. And you'll see later on, maybe not the case with with what's happening with the gas prices. So getting into reasons for concern. What we're seeing right now is 70% of travelers are concerned about inflation and how it's going to impact their financial well being. Concern number one, check. Indicated the percentage of the travelers who think transportation costs are going to greatly impact their decision to travel in the next next six months. You actually only have 25% of travelers saying that that's going to happen. However, when you change the question and you actually specifically focus on gas prices in the next six months. You'll find that it's a I'm bad at math around 65%, I think. Maybe 64% of of the population saying that it's going to greatly impact their decision to travel in the next six months. And this question was asked in March of March 30. And you can actually see how they've stacked this question over the course of three, three week or four weeks of of data research. And you can see nothing but a growing level of concern as it relates to gas prices. And what happens when a consumer sees gas prices increasing? They start to look at closer destinations, right? So that's that's it's actually the sad thing is we're kind of back to where we're at in the beginning of the pandemic where people are like, okay, I feel safe traveling in a regional manner. And you actually see this in this question here. The impact of rising gas prices on travel plans are going to result in a reduced number of travel trips that people are taking. And they're also going to choose destinations that are closer to home. There's the one and two most frequently answered question. So just just putting that out there. The final thing, because I don't want to talk about gas all day, because it is a bit depressing to look at the gas prices right now. But you do have 55.8% of travelers agreeing that if gasoline prices don't come down, they will be taking fewer road trips this spring. And this is a different data source. This is Destination Analyst, where the previous question was Longwoods Media. So you had 33% saying fewer trips in Longwoods. You have 55% in this research here. And I mentioned this, it's it's, you know, it's a tale as old as time. As as you've heard before, as as gas prices rise, people start to travel closer to home for the vacations. So I'd get a picture of who for the Arches timed entry that that we have to or the reservation system that we have to to focus on regionally here. Because that's what's starting to change. The last thing that I want to hit on as it relates to price inflation and costs, because I don't want to be depressing all day. Is that average flight costs are actually up 36% since the beginning of the year. This is going to start impacting the the percentage of the population who feel confident about traveling long distances. And that's unfortunate because as we know, people who travel from further away, spend more, stay longer, actually provide a better economic impact on our communities. The last, and this is, I promise, the last negative thing. But it is, as as I mentioned in the beginning, it was nice to hear your perspective on this. We do see future bookings are down for the next six months, year over year. Last year was pretty wild. As as it relates to the amount of bookings that happened in Moab, we're looking at the next six months of of being down about 17.5% compared comparatively to last year domestically. So this is for the US. Does anyone have any questions on this? Because I get into positive trends, I swear. Okay, so diving into reasons to be optimistic. International travel, this is for Moab. In the next six months, we're looking up about 214% from last year. Now, the the skeptic in myself would say, last year was pretty low for international travel, and that is completely true. We're actually still down. If you look at it compared to 2019 levels, we're actually still down about 50% comparatively. But it is really nice to see international travel starting to book again. So this is through Expedia's platform on what they're seeing internationally. The other thing that is a positive trend is we're seeing more support for communities that are feeling comfortable having travelers enter their community again. That's at the the highest level it's been since the start of the pandemic at 69% of of communities feeling that way. When you ask a traveler of the trips you have planned for the next six months, what is that going to be? 95% of Americans are still calling for road trips. That's with the current gas prices being where they are. So important to to keep that in mind. And then the other thing that continues to stay popular for travelers, that is enjoying nature. Number three remains, if there's something that came out of COVID, more and more people wanted to experience nature, which is part of what brought on so many problems for many of us in in outdoor spaces. But you do see shortly behind that getting away from crowds. Crowds is a new trend that is coming up in research more and more frequently as a deterrent to visitation. I don't think this chart has ever looked different. It's always June, July and August that that lead the pack in terms of how many people are planning, like when their trip is tentatively planned. I kind of put this here just so you guys can be prepared, not that you need it, because, you know, it's very, very similar to what you see every year. Another thing that's kind of emerging is is kind of, I'm not going to call them the hipster traveler, but travelers do want to avoid what they feel are touristy or overdeveloped places. That is a trend that also emerged during COVID and is continuing to 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 stay around. Active vacations, people want to get out, they want to run mountain bike, really all of the things that Moab offers. And and you're seeing that 50% of people strongly agree or agree that they want to travel, they want to plan more active vacations. And only 33% saying they're neutral and you have almost no one saying that they don't want to be active on trips. Titled this one, the halo effect question of the year, because it really does set the the respondent up to respond in a positive manner. And that is saying the statement, I usually make an effort to limit my personal impact on the environment. You find about 54% saying that they do this thing, they 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 try to limit their impact. And only only about 12% of the population saying that they they don't try to limit their impact. Compared to before, and again, all these questions are compared to before the pandemic, that's the way they they set the questions up. But how far will you likely be traveling to home? You do see a skew starting to to lean toward closer to home. Again, I think that's more less of a pandemic issue and more of a gas price issue. On this next question, we're asking, how strong is your desire to travel now and compared to before the pandemic? And there is this pent up demand and and dream and and aspiration to get out and travel. And that's what you're seeing in this one with 46% of the population said that they they feel they want to get out more than before. This is, yeah, yeah.
We are a little over time here. I just want to respect the time of our board meetings. If there's any on like super high level final, oh, there you go.
I got a question.
And anybody's free to go basically at this point if.
Yeah, manhandle us, keep us in.
Thanks. Take care.
My my question is, is like during COVID, we were like, we we got an influx of people who were traveling close to home because it was close and they do that. Then now we have kind of the same scenario with gas prices coming up. Where now we're we're marketing to the same group of people saying, hey, Moab's so close, you know. So do you see this being an issue or do is it would it be effective to be like, hey, what did you miss the first time? You know, come back or something, you know, or, you know, I I just wonder if like. We're going to get hurt. Not I don't think we're going to get hurt because I think people, maybe the people last time went to Park City and this time they're going to cut them off, you know, so, you know, whatever. But I just kind of wonder if we're going after the same demographic because of outside forces, you know.
I I can I can tell you at the state level, we remain focused on on long distance markets. And. I I think your your fear is 100% true. If you continue to remain dark in your your long distance markets, there is the the possibility that that. That you fall out of the consideration set. And what I didn't mention before is is the reason our messaging, especially on on the Arches Park, is is becoming more regionally focused. It's because that's where the travelers are currently looking. We're not, we're not out targeting to to get new travelers with that messaging. And instead, we're intercepting travelers to prepare them for what to expect. And and that's why it's skewing regionally. And and I hate personally, I hate seeing that we're back to where we were before in the beginning of the pandemic. Because that's literally what's happening is is people had these aspirations of traveling further away. And they've once truncated back because of of what's happening with gas prices.
I do have to add though to that, even in our campaigns last year and the current Arches one, we we do have a portion that is national. And that allows us to make sure that we're capturing those audiences on TripAdvisor that are willing to to travel and make that. But you are correct that there is a majority towards regional, but we've always made sure that we didn't.
It's national in nature.
On on the national presence.
I I was talking to someone the other day and they're from Canada. And you know, they're talking like they're still cheaper for us to come and travel in the US. Because, you know, we're paying two bucks a liter, you know, gas prices are still cheaper than Canada. They're still going to travel.
I have a question too. So on the one slide on where people were going to travel, I remember last year it showed national parks as one of the top 10. Was that on that report originally or is that no, it was and just people didn't choose it?
So it wasn't on the most recent wave, but the wave before this, national parks are still in the top three. And outdoor experiences are still like, well, everyone, I think most economists and and people in in data as it relates to the travel industry. Most people are projected that urban destinations were going to be the first, like, we're going to recover as soon as things got better. That's actually not what we're seeing in the data. People have have discovered the benefits of traveling into nature and wellness continues to be important to them. So outdoor in in national park vacations continues to be one of the top three things that we've seen. State.
Well, well, thanks so much, Jonathan. I think there was an ask for shooting the slides because we could send us, we will pass that on forward.
Of course, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, guys. We miss you all.
Did you ask who was sent it to you?
August, you should. I sent this to you on Friday, I believe, but if you need us to resend, happy to do so.
You're all good.
Great.
Thanks, guys.